...will mean different things, which is really interesting. So, almost everybody has the raspberry, which is what we call this.
It's seemed like a good cause, you know, get some funding for the zoo and just a chance to, yep, sample some local breweries and also just, yep, enjoy some good food and see some animals, too.
So, how many times do you get to drink a beer where the ingredients were picked out by a bear? So, this is called Bear Necessities, and the ingredients for this beer were picked out by the North American Black Bear Ranger here at the zoo.
They put out like lemongrass and hibiscus flower and honey and oranges, a couple other things. And he ate the hibiscus flower and then, of course, he went straight for the honey after that. It's a bear. And so, you know, so we ended up, okay, so I've got hibiscus and honey to use, and how am I gonna use that into a beer? So, we pretty much made this.
So, how did the pale ale fare?
It's very tart in like kind of a bitter way. I expected it to be more of a sour beer, so I might be a little bit disappointed by the spares choices, but if we're being honest, it is still delicious.
The four-hour event gave attendees a little taste of a lot of different things. It's enough to keep people coming back every year. Tony Chavez and Gina Garcia have been coming since the first one eight years ago.
We love it. We just wanna have fun.
I was gonna say, all you can drink for $65. I mean, you really can't beat that.
And feed animals, too. It's great.
After all, it's one of the few times you can enjoy the zoo with adults only as the event is for 21 and older.
It's just a fun night out in LA that you can do with your husband or your friends or whoever.
As zoo officials put it, "It's a safari for all the senses." In Griffith Park, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
It's not every day you get to try a bear's beer recipe. To keep up with the zoo's special events, visit lazoo.org. Hacking is a hot button issue nationwide, but with recent attacks on city governments, we decided to take a look at what the city is doing to stop cybercrimes. We got the details from Information Technology Agency's general manager, Ted Ross.
Hacking is nothing new. That's why it's extremely important for the city of Los Angeles to be excellent at cybersecurity.
After the recent massive cyber attack in Atlanta on the city's municipal systems, the city of LA is ensuring more than ever it is on top of its cybersecurity.
The city of Atlanta is a great recent example of why it's extremely important for governments to have good cybersecurity. They were hacked by a ransomware attack. It actually spread across their network. It took over various PCs and data sets, and it got to the point where for about five days, they couldn't even turn on a computer.
City services like the court system, animal services, airports, and law enforcement were completely shut down and greatly impacted the city for weeks and months afterwards. The initial cost to Atlanta was $2 million, but that has been increased to an additional $10 million.
The price tag isn't even done with just how many millions of dollars that could be used for police officers, for cleaning streets, for filling potholes, for making your community better. That has been taken and is being used to simply repair computer systems destroyed by cybercriminals.
Ross says the city's Information Technology Agency has already taken measures that would prevent Los Angeles from being in a similar situation.
One aspect is we have antivirus. We have all the proper configuration controls on all those public machines. We are constantly testing that to ensure that we don't have any open doors for people to come through. If someone did get through an open door, we provide data backup to ensure that if someone did encrypt data, we can go ahead and destroy that computer and bring that data back. You may lose some work, but it wouldn't allow our network to spread and to be hacked across it.
And here's how it affects Angelinos.
If you call an ambulance, they take your vital information and your personal health information, and they give it over to the hospital so that you can be taken care of as fast as possible. That's sensitive personal data that the government has. When you pay your water bills, when you get permits, these are all interactions that you're having with your government in one way, shape, or form. That's why it's extremely important for government to have good cybersecurity so that your personal information, that is yours, is protected. And cybersecurity is really a conversation of ensuring that only the people who should have your information have your information, nobody else.
A hard lesson learned for Atlanta, but hopefully one that LA and its residents never have to experience. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Some very handy tips from Ted Ross. Many popular sites like Google now offer two-step verification to help further protect your data. UCLA's Hammer Museum currently has an exhibit near and dear to the hearts of SoCal artists. From divisive politics to polluted water, Gil Reyes has more from Made in LA.
Made with hanging fishnets, artist Carolina Caicedo's installation dives right into the problem of plastics polluting our waters, protecting fish and wildlife among the issues tackled at the Made in LA exhibit at the Hammer Museum. Only LA-area artists are invited.
Artists are always responding to what's happening in the world, so many of the artists in the show are responding to, you know, the current state of affairs in the United States, politics.
And religion, oftentimes with Southern California's sun as the backdrop. Take this giant, broken-off sunglass lens by artist M.P.A. The rest of it can be found in another part of the museum.
So, they aren't whole. They're fractured. They're fragmented. And it's really meant to be somewhat of a commentary on kind of the state of affairs in the United States right now.
In response, there's this installation, a wall, not like the one in Mexico, but something more similar to a children's playhouse with small holes to talk through any differences between Republicans and Democrats, pro lifers and pro choicers, Lakers fans and Clippers fans, too.
We can laugh about it, and this would be a good place to do it.
Yeah, definitely. And I think, I mean, the colors that she chose are very intentional, right? They're very playful.
Thirty-three exhibits are on display. Be sure to vote for your favorite while here. The Made in LA exhibit is free.
Now, as visually interesting as these art pieces are, there's absolutely nothing like being here in person to experience them. The exhibit runs through September 2 at the Hammer Museum. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Made in LA exhibit comes around just once every two years. Be sure to catch it before it's gone in early September. You can keep up with all the Hammer's events at hammer.ucla.edu. Thinking about heading to the theater this weekend? If you have a mind for the macabre, there's an offering just for you at the historic Pico House.
So, if you step over here...
It's showtime! And here at the supposedly haunted Pico House, a different type of immersive play is about to take shape.
From the moment you walk into this space, you're given a cloak. You are part of the performance, so you're almost getting more bang for your buck.
Tonight's presentation, "The Assassination of Edgar Allan Poe."
It's a little bit spooky. It deals in the life and times of the author Edgar Allan Poe, and it's set here in the Pico House, which was built about 20 years after he died.
Since this is completely immersive theater, be prepared to follow the characters, the story, and the plot throughout the entire building.
Having the audience walk around instead of just on a set stage makes everything so much more live and real, and that's always the goal of live theater.
Moves up and down, and so the levels are amazing to play in. I'm fortunate to work with a great group of actors and a great group of directors.
One of the coolest aspects is that there are multiple versions of the play, and every night is a new experience.
So, the audience gets to choose, do I follow this person, do I follow that person? But they won't see all of the scenes in the play when they come see it. They'll need to come another time.
So, make sure you check out as many versions of the play as you can. It runs now through August 26. After that, never more. Okay, sorry, I couldn't help myself. I'm Seth Hancock for LA This Week.
The Downtown Repertory Theater presents the play for free, but encourages audience donations. For showtimes, visit downtownrep.com. This week, we join Councilmember Joe Buscagno for the opening of two new supportive housing units in the South Bay. These units are part of LA's mission to provide housing options for the formerly homeless. Seth Hancock reports.
Homelessness is a rising issue across America, but Los Angeles is creating permanent solutions by building supportive housing.
The project that you see before you is a template for other projects to follow in the city of Los Angeles. Each council member has committed to 222 supportive housing units throughout the city of Los Angeles. For me, this is 160 of those 222 units, but I feel that we need to do a lot more in the city of Los Angeles to address the housing issue. This housing project is another reminder that we need housing at all income levels, from market rate to affordable to formerly homeless individuals, and this is what makes the city of Los Angeles gonna thrive and address the homelessness issue as well.
To new tenants Carla and Lawrence McHugh, this supportive housing could not have come at a better time.
The supportive housing is very helpful. I wish I would've had it while I was working because then, you know, it would've been much easier for us. I could still be working, you know? But to be homeless and work and have my husband's health problems, it was a little bit too much for me, and it was unfair to him. We could've lived like normal human beings again.
And isn't it remarkable how a new home can provide a fresh outlook on life?
I am so happy. I'm in tears. This is a blessing. I am so grateful for this opportunity. I'm gonna make the best of it. I can't even use them words. So happy. I had a home now. I have a home again.
We love you. We bless you. And just know you're not alone. You will have services here on site every single day, so you do not go back out there and live on the sidewalks in your cars. God bless you. We thank you. We thank Metahousing, your case managers who are here. Thank you for not giving up.
As Councilmember Buscagno mentioned, each district has committed to 222 housing units of this type. Did you make it to a local block party with LAPD officers this week? Tuesday marked the 35th Annual National Night Out, where community members and law enforcement came together to make our neighborhoods safer. Anna Marcos has more from Silver Lake.
It was a fitting song for a night in which residents were busy taking back their streets. The 35th Annual National Night Out kicked off in neighborhoods all over the country, and Silver Lake was no different.
You know that there are 38 million people in 16,000 communities who tonight are saying, "Who's streets? Our streets." And these are our streets and our community.
The night is meant to make neighborhoods safer and to foster better relations with police. Officers come face-to-face with residents and kids in a positive block party atmosphere.
National Night Out, this is when America takes a moment to enjoy America.
We go every year. We love it. The kids have a great time, and they get to meet the police and the firemen.
My whole street, we're just are really active in the community, and I love living in Silver Lake, and I love this event.
A who's who list of the city's top brass was on hand to spend time with community members as residents recover from a recent shooting tragedy at the local Trader Joe's in which a store manager was killed by a shooter.
It really has helped define who we are as a community in Silver Lake. We care about one another.
To see them out here shaking hands makes me feel as if they care about the people that are here.
And it gives officers, again, an opportunity to get out of their cars, break bread oftentimes, and it can be just, you know, a little local barbecue.
Local barbecue or guacamole fest or cookie fest. It was a good time for all, what with petting zoos and magic tricks and, oh my, even a little chicken hypnosis. Just another national night out with residents putting a dent in crime by having a whole lot of fun. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
This year's National Night Out had an estimated 38 million attendees in over 16,000 communities across the country. Spend all day trying multitudes of ice cream? Yes, please. Project Runway has nothing on these fashion icons, and you might as well be walking on the sun as you relive the '90s with iconic bands Smash Mouth. All this and this week's things to do. Looking for a sweet way to beat this summer heat? Head on down to Ice Cream Alley, a recurring event inside Smorgasbord, LA. Ice Cream Alley features the best of LA ice cream, from the traditional to wild new interpretations you're guaranteed to love. Admission is free. Ice Cream Alley takes place every Sunday through September 2 at the Alameda Produce Market in downtown LA. From the stunning classic Vogue magazine covers through the era of Instagram, you don't want to miss this amazing Icons of Style Fashion Photography Exhibition at the Getty Center. Spanning a full century of photographs and material, the exhibition shows how the magazine cover as an art form has truly become a cultural force. The exhibition runs through October 21 at the Getty Center, 1,200 Getty Center Drive in Los Angeles. Admission is free. Dance back into the '90s with Smash Mouth. The iconic MTV era band is playing a free show as part of the Pershing Square Summer Concert Series. With hits like "Walking on the Sun" and "All Star," Smash Mouth is forever ingrained as part of fun '90s culture. Opening the show are the Spin Doctors. So, head on down to Pershing Square Saturday, August 18 for this really fun, free event. And that's a look at some things to do.
Let's get to wobbling.
Wobbling? Yep, these so-called wobble pieces are the stuff of kids' play fantasies. At least, that's what city leaders are counting on as they install the new adaptable play space at the Watts Alma Reeves Woods Branch Library, and the kids seem to be warming up to the wobble trend.
You never stop needing to play, to find a new friend, to get healthy, to just have some fun. It's part of what it means to be a human being.
Even Mayor Eric Garcetti tries on a wobble for size, and it seems a good fit. The playtime outside the library can definitely spark kids' imaginations, and city leaders hope so will the books and reading inside the library.
When all of you come to the library to wobble, and I know you will be wobbling this summer, be sure, be sure to explore and discover all of the amazing things there are to do at the Los Angeles Public Library. We are about access. We are about opportunity, empowerment, innovation, and lifelong learning.
To have a place to play here at the library, not only can y'all do your homework here now, but y'all can take a break in between homework, you know, have a little playtime, do your homework, invite friends, and all that good stuff.
Many here believe healthy kids with lots of opportunities help create a healthy community with its own opportunities.
I think it's nice. It's about time they starting to bring some stuff to the hood. Bring stuff to the minorities. Bring stuff to the community, put back into our community.
We're committed. We love this area. I grew up here, still here, and want to say to you, just know that we're here to make Watts the best that it can be. Have fun, and let's play.
And play, these kids do.
I like swimming, basketball, football, bubbles.
Yep, there is bubbles to be had, too. Some of the kids actually do make it into the library. One of them ends up getting a library card with the help of Mayor Garcetti, who, it turns out, is pretty good at storytime.
They pulled the enormous turnip right out of the ground. I know you guys have been wanting to see the turnip. It came, it came out.
It seems new worlds are already opening up for some of the kids, whether it's through books, through bubbles, or just good old playtime. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Finally, we'll close out this week's show with a look at how the LA Dodgers Foundation is helping to build 50 dream fields for LA's young sluggers. Anna Marcos reports.
It's a true field of dreams for kids to play ball, and not just little kids, big kids, too. Mayor Eric Garcetti threw the first pitch himself. This newly spruced-up Little League baseball field has opened in Bishop Canyon, a joint effort by the city and the LA Dodgers Foundation to build 50 so-called dream fields for children to play in. Javier Pavón came all the way from the valley with his mother to see it.
This field? Oh, this field, I think it's pretty big compared to other fields. Hopefully, I get a chance to play here. I really wish I do.
One, two, three.
The Northeast LA Little League, fresh off their successful spring baseball season, now has this new field to celebrate as well.
We got inspired by the Dodgers Stadium down below, so we, we actually, you know, get the whole site. So, it's got new irrigation, new turf, new soil, fencing. We put some dugouts, some pitching mounds, some batting cages.
Bishop Canyon is a very special project. We like to say that all of our Dodger's dream fields have a very special place, but to be in the backyard of Dodger Stadium...
One coach says the field is a win for the entire community.
They can see how nice the field is. They can see, you know, how clean it is, and they can see the coaching, the kids, the parenting, how, you know, the baseball brings the community together.
It's hard to imagine it now, looking out at the new fencing and the trees and the T-ball field, but take it from me, this field needed some real, real work. So, we rolled up our sleeves and we got busy. We wanted to make sure that all of you had a safe place to swing a bat.
And swing a bat, they do. These boys and girls are also apparently pros at throwing, catching, sliding into home runs, and stealing bases.
Did anyone steal a base this season? Nice!
This Field of Dreams is now open for business. All that's left to do is play ball. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
That's gonna do it for this edition. I'm Ameen Rashida. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also check out our newest social media feature, LA This Minute, on YouTube. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I keep the city's computers running and up to date. I launched a website to 4 million Angelinos.
Our team created a program that paged 48,000 city employees.
I help LA residents access all the city has to offer.
I make TV shows that air on LA City View 35.
I set up a data center in Las Vegas so city systems could keep running in the event of an earthquake.
I surveyed installed service, communication towers for thousands of police and firefighters.
I'm building a robot that tests police radios to make sure they're reliable.
And I programmed Amazon Alexa to help people access city services. Alexa, ask LA City how do I pay for parking ticket?
For LA City, you can pay your ticket in one of four convenient ways.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamert Park. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, and Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Carretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Oferl, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonn moves. Mr. Buscagno seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Sadio moves. Mr. Carretts seconds. Next items, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and it's time for the flag salute.
We're gonna ask Mr. Blumenfeld if he can please rise, if we can have everybody please rise in council chambers, join us in the flag salute.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. All right, let's go ahead and turn our attention to the council agenda. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 18 for two weeks to August 28th.
All right, that will be the order without objection. Next items, please.
Items one through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item four has an amending motion which is to be circulated. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
We'll go ahead and hold that. Next item.
There may be other specials.
Mr. Carretts.
Yes, I'd like to call item two special.
Okay, any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 16 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are, items are before us now. Do we have any cards?
Yes, there are cards on items 17 and 21.
Okay, then let's go ahead and, we'll take the multiple speaker cards at this time. Ms. McAllister.
Good morning. What, please call out my items.
Seventeen and 21.
Okay, seventeen, that is about communication from the chair personnel on animal welfare, where you want to target strategic workforce development task force. So that's what you want to do. I'm against that because the work source development centers are for illegal aliens. If you go in there, they have training for them, they find jobs for illegal aliens. You don't see any black people in there getting any services. So I think we need a federal investigation of the work source centers because they get federal funds. And we need to know why they're getting these federal funds and why they're discriminating against African Americans. Number 21, you want to finance $20 million for a new construction of a 54, a 50-unit multifamily housing project. You haven't built the HHH housing yet. I only found a few of them. President Herb Wesson is building, and O'Farrell. I've driven around 10 different developments. See, the developments are listed, the addresses, and I drive around there and you're not building a darn thing. I don't know where that money is going, how it's being embezzled, but we need a federal investigation because that money is supposed to be built, and that money is supposed to be used for building housing. And it's supposed to be affordable housing, and we want it for African Americans. Now what you're doing, the few that you are building, you're putting illegal aliens in there, and that still puts black people on the street. So we may have to have a revolution up in here in California because we're not going to take this crap. We're the taxpayers, whether you want to recognize us or not. We're the ones paying your salary and getting, and keeping the city being run.
Can you please stay on the agenda items?
I'm talking about this project right here.
On the agenda items, please.
6917 Main Street. I want the people to go by there, and after it's built, if they get the money to build it, I want you to tell me how many illegal aliens are in there, whether you see them coming in or out or not. Now, I'm really upset here.
All right, one minute for general public comment.
I'm really upset here about this attorney, city attorney's office. I have a list of all the 500 attorneys on staff, and some of them are not here. They're ghost. When I say ghost, they're put on, on the payroll by the controller, and that money is going somewhere else. Here's one right here. Xena Houston, $259,000. How do I, she's making that a year. How do I know she's not an attorney? She's not registered with the bar association. All they have to do is put their names, and the bar association will come up and see if they're, if they're attorneys. We got a Karen I.D., her last name is I.D., she's on here for making $185,000. She's not with the bar association. We have another one, Lisa Zalangi, Z-A-L-A-N-Y-I, $180,000. She's not with the bar association. So I'm finding the ghost, and we want an investigation, a federal investigation. Also, you're hiring new attorneys at 108,000, and then you're going out there getting some independent attorneys to do the same work. The city attorney's office has 128 million budgeted, and I'm going to make sure we break that down to about one million.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So colleagues, let's go ahead and reconsider item number one for ordinance. We'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Now we'll go ahead and vote.
Twelve ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, we can vote on the remaining items, including number one?
If we could vote on number one first, please?
Oh, separately. We'll go ahead and open the roll on number one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Next items, please.
And then the next items for the vote would be 16, 17, 19, 20, and 21.
We'll go ahead and open the roll on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We have a request to move items 13, 14, and 15 forthwith per Ms. Martinez. We'll go ahead and move those forthwith without objection. That'll be the order. Thank you very much. Item two, Mr. Carretts, you called special.
And Mr. President?
Mr. Harris-Dawson. Nineteen forthwith, without objection. That'll be the order. Right, thank you. Mr. Carretts, item two.
Could I ask that you hold this on the desk for a little while?
Do you have a change or recommendation?
I'm not ready to discuss it yet. I'd like to have it discussed a little later in the meeting.
We'll go ahead and hold that. I know there are cards on two. I want to let folks know that on item two, public hearing has already been held, so we're going to ahead and hold that. A number of the folks who had already filled that out also filled out general public cards. So letting folks know that filled out a general public card on item two, those are for items that are not on the agenda, so it won't be on item two and it'll be held till the end of the meeting. So just wanted to let people know that might be here for that.
And Mr. President, items 22 through 25 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to also hold those on the desk?
We'll go ahead and hold those on the desk as well at this time. Thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move over to presentation. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, I understand you want to have a special introduction?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would love to welcome, from the University of Southern California, Price School of Public Policy's International Public Policy and Management Program. We have a delegation. Let me talk a little bit about the program's director and their academic director, Dr. Joyce Mann, Dr. Joanna Yu. This year's delegation is standing here in council chambers from Shenzhen municipality in China, led by Meng Xiaowen, Deputy Director General of the Shenzhen Municipal Supervision Committee. The delegation is focusing on innovation and information technology, artificial intelligence, and governance. During their stay in Los Angeles, they have been attending presentations at USC related to this year's themes. They're also receiving briefings at local and regional government agencies, universities, and research institutions. Today, they'll be giving presentations, for example, by the LADWP and the LAPD. Next, they're headed to San Francisco, which is an incredible city, but I let them know that I love Los Angeles more than I love San Francisco, but to enjoy their visit. I want to give them a warm welcome to Los Angeles, this incredible delegation from Shenzhen, China. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for recognizing them. Thank you for being here. All right, we have a special presentation. Mr. Wesson, the floor is yours.
Ladies? Good morning, good morning, good morning, Mr. President and members, and to all of the people that are joining us today. Welcome to City Hall and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting. Mr. President, this is a very important presentation, so if you could please ensure that Mr. Herman does not disrupt this presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the Los Angeles Links. Now just give them a round of applause, and then I'll explain. The Links is a nonprofit organization of professional women of color, and it was created in 1946, dedicated to community service and also providing opportunities for women to advance. This national organization has over 14,000 members, 283 chapters in 41 states, plus the District of Columbia and the Bahamas. The Los Angeles Links chapter, the young ladies that are joining me today, they were founded in the year 1950, and today they are celebrating the 66th anniversary of their Leadership Institute. During this time, the Los Angeles chapter has raised over $1 million that they give to organizations that provide childcare, tutorial services. They have always been that type of organization that gives back. They also spend times with our leaders of tomorrow by helping them understand what it's like to be an adult, how to set an example, how to be a role model. This past year, they have worked with the 54th Street Elementary School and the Windsor Hills Math/Science Magnet with their STEM program. They've also worked with Medicine for Humanity and UCLA, where they have provided, helped to provide much-needed medical services to women in the country of Uganda. They have a mentorship program, again, where they will show these individuals not how to manage, but how to lead, and how to give back to your community, what kinds of community service to do. And you know what the topic is, members, this time? This group of fine young ladies will be working to help homeless women in crisis. So they recognize that homelessness is not a crisis, it is the crisis. So they're going to do everything that they can. After they complete a program of about six or seven months, they do have an opportunity to blow off a little steam. They have a big cotillion. In my younger days, I did take a few ladies to these functions. In my, way back in a younger day, when it covered wagons, you know? But, but these, this is one heck of a celebration, and I was honored to be a part of that. It is my pleasure, though, to present to you the leader of the Los Angeles chapter, who is, who is a very dear, personal friend of mine, but she is a very trusted city high-level staff person herself, working out of sanitation. So if you would help me in welcoming the President, Janice Murray, to the podium.
Thank you so much. It's a great honor to be here this morning and to introduce our debutantes for this year. I am Link Janice Jamison Murray, President of the Los Angeles chapter of the Links, and I want to thank Council President Wesson and his staff for welcoming us here, as well as all of you. So thank you so much. We're so happy to be here.
Ladies, get her in. It is now my pleasure to present to you a resolution from the...
Mr. Harris-Dawson wishes to speak. Don't, don't present it yet, quite yet, not yet.
I, I'm hiding it.
We'll pause for a moment.
I just, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to rise and thank you, Mr. Wesson, for bringing this very, very important presentation to the, to the halls of the Los Angeles City Council. You cannot overstate how important this organization is. The, the very bedrock of our community is, is based on young women like you who step up, prepare themselves to participate in their community, to raise, to raise families, and to be members of society. And so you should take your role as a debutante very, 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 very seriously. I have, my story is a little bit different than yours, Mr. President, although you might be able to identify. So we, we got all, a young debutante asked me to be her escort to the, to the ball, and we got everything all together. And then the photographer and the programmer, somebody like, you know, you, Ms. Janice, came and said, "Well, we think you should get another date because you're not as tall as the debutante." So I got canceled that, that, that year. But we went in subsequent years, and we really, really appreciate the organization of Ms. Renee and Ms. Janice, all that you do to, to help build the kind of community we all deserve. So thank you so much, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, and thank you for that story, Mr. Harris-Dawson. I, I did not allow height to bother me. I just got some, some platform shoes and rocked it, all right? Plus, I had an Afro which gave me another inch and a half, so no. But you know, in our community, in our community, we have always believed that it takes a village. And that's part of what we're doing here today. And I'm also proud to announce that as a part of the, the program this year, my chief of staff's daughter is a part of this, and I guess I better pay attention to her escort is to the big cotillion. Anyway, let's give it up for LA Links.
While we prepare for the next presentation, we have a couple of items that were scheduled for closed session, as Ms. Martinez is wait making her way to the podium. Mr. Krikorian, how would, how would you like to handle the closed sessions?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 22 through 25 have all been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. All of those matters can be heard in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, members, and seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and open the, oh, yeah, let's go ahead and read those in the record.
For item 22, in the matter entitled "Aria Visited the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend up to $375,000 in settlement. For item 23, in the matter entitled "David Doros et al. versus the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend up to $1.6 million in settlement. For item 24, in the matter entitled "Marvin Blaine versus the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. And finally, for item 25, in the matter entitled "Leonardo Gonzalezita et al. versus the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend up to $1.7 million in settlement.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I have a very special group that I'd like to, please help me welcome, this very special group from Birmingham Community Charter School. Can we please give them a big round of applause? It gives me a great pleasure to introduce to you the 2018 LA City Section Champions and Winners of the Open Division Title, the Birmingham Community High School baseball team from my district. Big round of applause, come on. This is a big deal. Mrs. Sadio, I know you can do better than that. There you go. On June 2nd of 2018, at Dodger Stadium, these young men with the mentorship of these coaches secured their team's third championship in the last five years. That day, they defeated El Camino Real High School, which just happens to be in Mr. Blumenfeld's district. Sorry, Bob. Proving that the best team can handle any curveball that comes their way. In fact, Birmingham High School won the first ever city championship. In fact, Birmingham High School won the first ever city champion title back at Dodger Stadium in 1969. Now, 50 seasons later, the Patriots returned to Dodger Stadium to win another championship title. The young men behind me have defeated the best of the best. The team has secured three City Sections Championship titles in the last five years, winning in the years of 2014, 2017, and this year, 2018. Colleagues, I've been, I haven't really been a big sports fanatic, but I can understand the dedication and hard-working commitment it must take to become a champion. These young men have gone above and beyond because of their, not only because of their student athleticism, they've also exempted great leadership and performance, not only in the field, but also in the classroom. And many of the players in this baseball program have been afforded an amazing opportunity to play for their high school, but they have also received offers and scholarships to play at the collegiate level, like Kalib Reyes, who this year was on the winning team and will be playing baseball at Accidental College. Ms. Rodriguez? Oxy? What player is going to go to your alma mater? There you go. These special triumphs could not be possible without the mentorship of the people who coached them. I have to acknowledge the dedication of the coaching staff that is here today. Under the leadership of Coach Matthew McQuarrie, along with all the amazing team's assistant coaches and directors and the school faculty, these young men took their team to the highest level of high school baseball. This team has made their coaches and family and community extremely proud. I'd like to welcome one of their players to say a few words, is Jenny Tenscher, who plays catcher for this team. Is he here?
Yep, right behind me.
Right behind me. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
No, Johnny.
Johnny?
Tenscher.
Tenscher. Pincher like Tenscher?
Tenscher.
All right, Tenscher. Here we go. He is the team's catcher. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Johnny Tenscher. First and foremost, being able to go back-to-back is a huge feeling, especially with these group of guys, that I like to say that they're my brothers. And if you're able to go to one of our practices or games, you see all the hard work that's put in. And we'll put 100% effort into all those practices and games. But being able to go to Dodger Stadium twice is, I mean, it's a huge feeling, and it's probably the best feeling ever.
Great. Another big round of applause for Johnny. Now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our head coach, Matthew McQuarrie. Is that how you pronounce your last name?
Maury.
Maury. Gosh. Tenscher, Maury. Got it. All right, please help me welcome Coach Maury.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez and the City Council here. First, we'd like to honor and give you one of our city championship back-to-back hats and one of our shirts also for you. We've also got some for some other people, too. I'm not sure how many, but we'll check, make sure Mr. Blumenfield gets one.
Mr. Blumenfield.
I know Mr. Blumenfield will want to wear it around his district, so we'll make sure we get him one of those.
Come on, Bob.
It's even got the scores on the back for you, just so you... Want to start out, again, thanking you guys for having us here. It's a great honor and privilege to be able to come here, and just as much so as playing at Dodger Stadium, which is, you know, for a lot of these kids, they, you know, as you guys well know, too, grow up going to Dodger Stadium, watching games. And for these young men to be able to get out there on the field and play there with, you know, some of their idols and whatnot has been a terrific experience. You know, our principal over here, Ms. Bowden, our Athletic Director, Rick Prezon, have been huge supports for our athletes, not only, you know, on the field, but academically also. We want to just kind of point out, as you mentioned, of our student athletes, of the 27 young men that were out there with us at Dodger Stadium, 18 of those 27 all had 3.0 or above, okay? Nine of those 18 had 3.5 or above, and three had 4.0 and above. So I want to give a big round of applause for all those young men. Thank you for having us here, and we appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much, Coach Maury. And please, let's give another big round of applause to our Patriots and gold Birmingham High School. So I want to present the team with a beautiful certificate congratulating you on winning the 2018 L.A. City Section Championship and Open Division to Birmingham High School Charter School. Thank you very much, and go back and win another title.
See what we can do for you. Thank you.
Congratulations to Birmingham High School and Ms. Martinez. I want to stand and recognize this incredible team. As a member of the 1992 San Pedro High Championship team, that I had the privilege of playing at Dodger Stadium, I'll never forget those moments. And I see the faces here in the audience and those accepting this award and resolution. And it reminds me of how blessed you are to have the teammates surrounded by loving and supportive coach and faculty at Birmingham, that the experience on that field and taking the championship, you will never forget. You'll never forget that moment when that last out was called and you all celebrated on the field, right? And you all came together as a team, as a family, celebrating the championship. And it wasn't easy. We were underdogs, but that made us stronger than ever. But I had the opportunity to speak at that podium, just like Johnny, just like Johnny just did. And when I see you, I see the future of our city, whether it's a council member, a doctor, a lawyer, someone who is going to get into the field of technology, or science, or education. That's what baseball and athletics will continue to do for our young people throughout the city of Los Angeles. So congratulations, Ms. Martinez, to Birmingham High School. You guys are going to go places. And I'm hoping that this time next year, we'll have San Pedro High School baseball championships here before you. Congratulations.
Are you a betting man, sir? Bring him, Mr. Buscagno.
agenda. There's an amending motion that's been circulated, and I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment on item four. All right, Herman, come on up on item four. Knock you out on that in your general public comment.
Let me knock this one out of the ballpark, folks. It's all about gang reduction and a committee report. Well, I'm the committee, and I'm here to report, fuck the chair, fuck personnel, and safe regard for all animal welfare, because I'm committed at trimming and maintenance and projecting a quality of life that is so grander than any motherfucker can do in the city of Los Angeles, because I am one healthy motherfucker. And that's how I run this city.
All right, go ahead and start us. You're not on the topic at all. Start us one minute for general public comment. Thank you.
Everything's so pleasant. What am I on now, bitch? General public comment. It's gravy when you give the chief of police a $1 million raise on his retirement and the scumbag takes your fucking money, the hard-working taxpayers' money, and puts it on a beautiful pension, the same way Herman Jason Wesson can't pay for the fucking police bill for his son's wedding. That is so fucking disgusting, goddammit. And what do I do? All I do is I come in and I criticize niggers who subsidize our money to their process of programs, services, and activities outside of City Hall. Stop stealing fucking public money. Put fucking money to HHH, and I'm going to bitch, bitch, bitch. 42 U.S.C., 1983. Fuck you, England, you big-ender, Jew.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead and have a seat. Time is up. All right, with that, colleagues, on item four, we have no other public comments. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That's approved. Mr. Herman, if you're going to disrupt this meeting, you're going to be asked to leave. Don't yell out. You already had your time at the podium. Thank you. I don't want to hear another word. Okay, this is what we're going to do, folks, on item two. We're going to go ahead and take general public comment now. Item two, public comment, has already been satisfied, but we're going to take general public comment, because I think a lot of the same people are here. And I'll remind you that on general public comment, supposed to only speak to items that are not on the agenda, but we'll go ahead and call Mr. Herman. Don't make another sound. No. Sit down. You're already done. Claudio? Bovell, followed by Elizabeth Peterson? Bill Icke? Cindy Bloom? Elijah Wells? And you can speak in any order. I'm going to call you up, but you can all start coming up if you could, once I call your name. And if you can just say your name right before you speak. I call a number of other names. If you can all start coming up to the mic and just line up.
My name is Claudia Bovell. I'm here to thank Mr. Paul Caress and Ms. Sadio in the effort in regards to the homeless situation and the displacement of elderly people out of their apartment complexes. And I have some information for Ms. Sadio, also Ms. Caress. Ms. Sadio, thank you for this book that really helped the tenants to understand their rights and so far. And also, I would like to say to Mr. Herr Wesson in regards to community success, my daughter's name is Kalina A. Bovell, the third African-American female conductor in the United States. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Bill Icke. I'm with Safe Coalition. This marks the four-year anniversary of us receiving by postcard a notice that high-speed rail was going to be going through our community. In that four years, the City Council has not taken any action to support the community. They have not, their motions just languishing in the, in committee. The preferred routes for high-speed rail are going to be coming out pretty soon, and the city has done nothing. If you look at the cities in Northern California, they have actually done everything for their communities and much to the detriment of ours. I just can't tell you how much, how important it would be for the City Council to actually take an action on this, rather than sitting around and waiting for them to actually just...
Right, thank you.
Stick it to you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Peterson? We've got a number of the speakers already coming up. Okay, come on up, and if you could state your name.
My name is Samira Squires, but I am here to take place of Elizabeth Peterson. I had also filled out a speaker card on behalf of myself.
You can only speak on behalf of yourself, so that's your one minute. You can't yield time to another speaker, another person. Okay, Herman, you're out. You've just disrupted this meeting. Sergeants, if you can escort him out, please.
You're judging people.
Hold her time. Thank you very much.
Fucking Jew. That's all you ever do is judge people. You don't give people a chance to speak on public comment, you motherfucker.
Please continue to disrupt this meeting as he does almost every single day.
Fucking Jew. I'm talking to you. You disgrace people by one minute.
And Mr. President, in case the camera can't catch it, Mr. Herman is continuing to shout and scream and disrupt this meeting as the officers escort him from the room.
Please escort him out, and his little dog, too. All right, thank you.
I'm leaving you, Jew, and that goat doesn't have a horn, I swear.
We'll start your time over again. Mr. Krikorian, yes?
I think just for the sake of the record, it's worth noting that there are at least eight or 10 members of the public wishing to offer comment to this city council that have had to stand there and wait while Mr. Herman is being escorted out of the room, shouting racist and otherwise disgusting comments as he's being escorted out by the Los Angeles Police Department. And these real members of the public, who took time out of their schedule to come here and give comment on matters before this body and that are part of the work of this body, have had to stand here and wait and had their rights interfered with by Mr. Herman. And I think it's worth noting that for the record.
Well, I would go further than that and say, I absolutely see no reason why, once they've been warned, and it's the same individual every single meeting, he can't be barred from attending the next council meeting. And until a city attorney can provide any proof or evidence on why we can't do that, I'd like to start employing that immediately. So let's go ahead and start her one minute back on the clock. Thank you.
Again, my name is Samira Squires, and I am one of the planners at the Elizabeth Peterson Group, and that is a land use entitlement firm. And we represent restaurants, hotels, bars, and certain clubs. And I would like to fully support Councilmember Krikorian to streamline the conditional use permit process. Stated with great respect, the entitlement process does not take six months, it takes 12 to 18 months. When you incorporate plan check, construction, and the alcoholic beverage control, the process becomes approximately three years. If you are building any Type 1 high-rise, as the CEO of the company I work for, Elizabeth Peterson, has just done, the process can take up to five years. Sadly, at the Elizabeth Peterson Group, we rarely engage with small business owners. As respectfully stated, the process can be long, arduous, and most cannot sustain themselves through the process. Small businesses are the backbone of...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
...Los Angeles.
Okay, thank you. I'll remind the speakers also, public comment on two has already been closed, and so for general public comment, it's for items that are not on the agenda, if you could. So if you're going to speak on two, please, I'll give you a little latitude, but keep it incredibly brief because of that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Bloom, and I'm here to talk about motion 16-1068, which expires in 38 days. And it was moved by Councilmembers Krikorian, Wesson, O'Farrell. Thank you so much for putting that motion together. It's languished for two years. Three neighborhood councils have submitted CISs, and two more neighborhood councils are almost done. We cannot have this motion expire, because all of the neighborhood council and council work has been wasted. We've got two options. We can amend it to include all routes, this is regarding high-speed rail, by the way, and then pass it, or we can keep the file number and redo the language. And our group Safe has submitted a draft for your approval and review. So we need it to move through the Transportation Committee. We need to have it approved. And Los Angeles City really needs to be a leader. There have been many motions and letters submitted by other cities, including Gilroy, San Carlos, Santa Clarita, San Fernando, and Morgan Hill. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eli Wells, and I'm the president of the Lakeview Terrace Improvement Association. And I'm here to speak about the high-speed rail and the impacts that it would have on our community. From Lakeview Terrace, beautiful city with the rolling hills and the open land and the equestrian horse riding. And this is a community we'd like to keep that way. We love our community, but the high-speed rail will have a detrimental impact on our community. There were reports that were originally issued that said that there would be a no or low impact to our community, but that's not true. There will be a very negative and detrimental impact to our area with the pollution, the noise... noise. Just imagine a high-speed rail coming right by your house. It would be very noisy, and it would really be a problem. So, we're just asking for your support from our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jacqueline Gamble. I represent Shadow Hills, and I also am speaking about the high-speed rail problems that we're encountering in our communities. Not only is it the housing and the cities and the businesses that are affected, but also the environmental community is deeply affected by the hostage-taking aspects of the high-speed rail and the processes they're putting us through. This high-speed rail will have immeditable damage to the Angeles Forest, the wildlife within, the Haynes Canyon Creek area, which has, actually has water in it right now, unlike so many of our dry creeks in Southern California. And it'll also go right by our famous little Camp Weston, which is right, you know, whole dear to Councilman Weston's favorite in day, children's activity in the Hanson Dam area. So this thing will go right through the Hanson Dam area. You know, who's speaking on behalf of our environmental concerns of this area?
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Cindy Clegorn from Sunland Tahanga. I'm here to speak with regards to the high-speed rail. There is a list of community organizations opposed to the present routes that we believe the Los Angeles City Council should support. Three neighborhood councils, Silmar, Sunland Tahanga Foothill Trails, the SAFE Coalition, which consists of community leaders from Shadow Hills, Silmar, Cagle Canyon, Lakeview Terrace, Sunland Tahanga, Latuna Canyon, Sun Valley, and Pacoima. Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. Lakeview Terrace Improvement Association has submitted a community impact statement. Cagle Canyon Civic Association. Latuna Canyon Community Association. Silmar Neighborhood Council. Foothill Trails, Sunland Tahanga, all have committed, submitted community impact statements. Under study is Pacoima and the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. Please, councilmembers, we want to work together on this. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Nina Roel, Sunland Tahanga, and I want to thank you and Councilmember Krikorian for your actions regarding this morning. I'm presenting a list of other elected officials throughout Los Angeles region who are opposed to the present high-speed rail route, proposals that we believe the Los Angeles City Council should join and work with. The LA Board of Supervisors presented this with a five-signature letter, Congressman Adam Schiff and Tony Cardenas, legislators Senator Bob Herdsberg, Senator Anthony Portentino, and former legislators Carol Lou and Rollo Boca Negra. LA USC Board members, present and past, Kelly Gonaz and Monica Ratcliffe. Importantly, city councils in more than a dozen cities in California have already proposed motions, filed lawsuits, and are fighting hard against damaging high-speed train proposals in their communities. Most importantly, in our own city, the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition link.
Nina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Dave DiPinto from the SAFE Coalition. I was here four to five months ago for the same purposes today, which is to request our council work together with us to get a very strong, unequivocal motion opposing all of the above-ground routes proposed through the northeast San Fernando Valley. I was told at the time that a council office was working on a new motion, but nothing has happened. We're here twenty days or so before the existing motion expires. We've provided Councilman Weston with a draft of a, an improved motion that covers all of the communities, and we call upon Council President Weston as the best person to pull these council offices together. This is a regional issue. It's a major issue in Council District Two, Council District Six, and Council District Seven. It is not the province of one council district. Again, we need a strong bulletproof, make that bullet train-proof, motion and position from the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name's Shane Phillips. I am here to speak in support of the streamlining of CUPs for on-sale alcohol permits, so I will hew to your guidance and keep it as brief as possible. Just want to say that this is a smart reform. It's really a win-win that lowers the barriers to entry, at the same time that it holds restaurant operators to a very high standard as good neighbors. So we just want to thank Councilmember Krikorian and also the Ad hoc Job Creation Committee for putting this forward, and we hope you guys can approve it today. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Are anybody else here that I didn't call for general public comment? Okay, so if you guys want to start coming up, if, did you already put your name in on the back?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, and then just, if you could, state your name right before you speak.
My name is Gilbert Mora. I'm here representing Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance, a coalition of community agencies who advocate for public health and safety issues. I want to bring to the councilmember's attention that the motion for the alcohol restricted-use sub-district, motion number seventeen dash zero one one seven, put forth by Honorable Councilmember Carras, has been sitting in Plumb for a year and a half, but the Plumb has fast-tracked the over-the-counter CUB number two, motion which does not allow for public input for CUB approvals. I feel it was unfair that the needs of the business before the community, which the over-the-counter motion does. RS, which we call it, would be a valuable tool for communities not in the entertainment districts to control over-concentration of alcohol in their neighborhoods. So I ask the council to agendize the in-plumb RS so that it may be discussed and moved forward in the process.
Good morning, everyone. Carlos Leon with Community Coalition. In regards to number two, we're completely opposing any type of ways where our community can be inundated with more liquor. This is a complete insult to South LA residents who for over thirty years have been speaking out loudly to prevent any additional liquor or drugs coming to our communities. This disregards all the efforts, campaign efforts, for over thirty years now, and is a complete insult. They should be listened to, we should be acknowledged, and we should be expediting nuisance abatement and not making it easier for our community to be disengaged and thrown away. This is just an immediate attack on our black and brown community, as we've always seen, and it's to be taken as such, and we need to make sure that we are not going backwards, as we've seen in the eighties. We are really under attack right now, and this is extremely important to be taken into account and prevent any additional ways to make additional liquor come into our community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fonda Jordan. I am from the Community Coalition. I'm a resident in South Los Angeles. I oppose the liquor permit because of the fact that I lived through times of seeing the criminalization around liquor stores, how the alcohol itself affects the community, how it's over-concentrated with crime because of these liquor stores, people hanging out. We just had an incident less than two weeks ago where five people were shot in Los Angeles at, at the liquor store, and I just wanted to say that our community don't need more liquor permits, we need more wellness in our community. We already have enough problems with alcoholism, as you know. You see the statistics on alcohol use, what happens to people who abuse it, either killing themselves or they kill other people, and I'd like to say that, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Chavez. I am also with Community Coalition and born and raised in south-central Los Angeles. So I have lived all my life being, having access to these liquor stores. So I'm here to say they will not be present in our neighborhoods any longer in our black and brown communities. Who is this beneficial for? This is not beneficial for us. You guys have disregarded our public health, our, our safety. All to benefit who? If you want more liquors, put them in other counties and other communities. Don't mess with our neighborhoods any longer. We are not having this. We are here to stand and stand strong against this. There's an over-concentration of liquor stores in every corner. You want to fast-track this alcohol permit, the same way you're fast-tracking these tobacco shops in our neighborhood? So we're not just battling against one, we're battling against another as well, and we are here to say, we are not having this. You will see us again.
Hello, everyone. My name is Danae Joseph. I'm a sixteen-year resident of Los Angeles and a fellow at Community Coalition, and one of the things that we've realized throughout our fellowship is the over-concentration of smoke shops and liquor stores within the South LA community. It's extremely problematic, because as it stands, only two percent of those applications gets denied. So why is it that it needs to be on a fast track, when people are already getting the liquor licenses that they need to start these businesses? These things are detrimental to our community. We need more things that fosters community engagement. We don't need any more things that's gonna farther any health problems within our community, and we just want to ensure that we have senior centers, parks, things that are beneficial for our community to grow and to do better. We don't need sites that are gonna foster loitering and criminalization, increased criminalization of our community, because we already have that. The South LA community deserves to be heard, and we don't need a fast track, because for many years, we've had to deal with these problems.
Hello, my name is Nori Admasu, and I'm also with Community Coalition. And I'm here to say that increasing the, really expediting the process for people to get these conditional use permits and for, just make it an administrative process, is to really silence the community and to make it almost impossible for us to advocate for what we actually want to see in our community. And at, and as we see already, we have a process that only denies two percent of the applications for this, which is just, we need to be more discerning about the establishments that we make way for. And when you have establishments already that are, that have all these obstacles, because these liquor stores, these nuisance sites provide, make it difficult for businesses adjacent to these places to even access customers that feel safe. So all of these establishments have repercussions. They have, they create an atmosphere of addiction, and they provide a site for gang recruitment. They provide a site for, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Today was a very eye-opening day for me today, to watch this board, the president. I watch you on your phone, and you talk most of the time, the people, these people, these taxpaying people come up here and trying to present their problems. Half the members are not here. Half of you guys not even care. I got attention of these two men, I've seen their attention be on some of these people since they've been here. We pay your salary, and you guys don't even halfway care. You, I'm just getting your attention. Why are you here? Why are you guys on the board?
Good morning. Charles Porter, United Coalitionese. I work in the Skid Row area, and for many years, we actually fought to clean up some of the nuisance businesses, and the process took more than ten years for some locations. So, we're very concerned about expediting a process that already is easy for people to expand alcohol availability. We also have great concerns about stifling community voice right now downtown. We're looking at the downtown community plan, and other communities have community plans. And one of the things we've been discussing is how we can put limits in our neighborhood to protect us from alcohol availability. And so, we, we ask that you oppose this, propose motion, because it does, it takes away community voice, and if anything, we should be expediting the process to clean up nuisance establishments in our, in our communities. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Sarah Blanch, and I am co-chair of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. We have over thirty organizational members spanning all fifteen council districts. Now, it may be that the CUB process needs to be improved, but we oppose this motion in its current incarnation, because it does not allow for public input. Unacceptable. We work with communities, we work with dozens of neighborhood councils, dozens of community members. We see, there are over nine hundred licenses in the application process alone in Los Angeles right now. Development is at a fever pitch. These people are dealing with businesses coming in that are literally in Venice, where we work specifically on the west side, thirteen feet away, a patio selling alcohol from where their baby is sleeping. They need to be able to negotiate in a reasonable way with these businesses. They need to have their voices heard. So, this motion, without allowing for public input, unacceptable to vote for. It would be a betrayal of your constituents and a betrayal of a reasonable negotiation that allows for better quality of life, better public health and safety for everyone. So, no to the motion. Thank you.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. My name is Albert Melena. I'm with the Communities in Action Coalition in the San Fernando Valley. We've visited over six hundred retail outlets in the San Fernando Valley and seen how just one outlet, poorly-run outlet, can severely impact the quality of life and public safety throughout the valley and our most vulnerable communities. This really is about respecting the democratic process and allowing for community input, which for most folks is their only opportunity that they are gonna have to express their support or opposition to an outlet coming in community, into communities. We've been fighting for local control and for community input for many years. We cannot silence our communities, we cannot take away any opportunities for them to provide feed, to provide feedback and participate in this process. We cannot support this motion moving forward. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Dina Cruz, and I live in Boyle Heights for over thirteen years, City fourteen, and I am here to share my concerns in opposition to the creation of an administrative process that does not look at the city's failures to enforce existing alcohol regulations and implement community-driven policies, like our community plans, particularly Boyle Heights. Expediting alcohol permits will have a lasting negative impact on public health and deplete municipal resources. It makes more sense to expedite nuisance abatement and hold existing problematic operators accountable in communities that have been underserved for decades. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adeline Bertha. I am here today to show my position to this motion. For years, us, the community, have worked tirelessly to design and develop plans that articulate a long-term vision for our neighborhoods. Many plans address alcohol availability, and it is wrong and counterproductive to undercut those plans with this measure. This motion disrespects the democratic practice. Do not vote yes for this motion. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Socorro Chacon. I live in the Council District Nine, and I work on the City fourteen, and I'm here in opposition of the motion seventeen zero nine eighty-one, that definitely would reduce expenses to the city, but unfortunately would exclude us from being included. Even now, our voice, our concerns are not being taken in consideration, since many alcohol licenses with community opposition are being approved. With this motion, our voice will be completely shut. So, this motion states that the city will continue enforcing and monitoring regardless of the approval process and, and ask for compliance to the businesses. My question to you is, who is going to enforce these conditions? Who is going to protect our community from nuisance businesses? So please, before you move forward, keep in mind, our communities, at the end of the day, we are the ones suffering the consequences.
Buenos dias, señores, miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Ana Hernandez.
Good morning. My name is Ara Hernandez.
Pertenesco al Distrito catorce.
I belong to District fourteen.
En la comunidad de Boyle High.
In the community of Boyle Heights.
Específicamente Pico Gardens y las Casitas.
I specifically Pico Garden and the Casitas.
Yo soy la presidenta de esta comunidad y represento trescientas familias.
I am the president of this community, and I represent three hundred families.
Como presidente estoy aquí para oponerme a la moción uno siete cero nueve ocho uno.
As president, I am here to oppose motion one seven zero nine eight one.
Esta moción tiene un impacto negativo en las comunidades a no considerarlo como parte del proceso.
This motion has a negative impact in the community, since it's not considered as part of the process.
No queremos perder ese derecho como comunidad.
We don't want to lose that right as community.
Las comunidades es donde y es la base principal para cualquier negocio.
The communities are the main base for any business.
Que esta poliza que la ciudad quiere pasar.
That this policy that the city wants to approve.
Estamos aquí.
Estamos aquí para hacerle saber al señor José Wizard, que es nuestro representante. Hemos trabajado juntos. Él nos ha apoyado en muchos proyectos que hemos tenido en nuestras comunidades, y ahora que no nos olvide.
We are here to let Mr. José Wizard not to take in consideration and not to forget about us.
It's the next speaker, please.
I believe that working together, we can achieve many things.
Thank you very much. Let her know her time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Buenos dias a todos.
Good morning, everyone.
Mi nombre es Delmira Gonzales.
My name is Delmira Gonzales.
Vivo en Boyle Heights, en el Distrito 14.
And I live in Boyle Heights, District 14.
Y yo soy líder de mi comunidad y vivo cerquitas de mi iglesia, es Dolores Mision.
I live, I, I'm a leader of my community, and I live near church, and that's my, the church in my community.
Y soy líder de esa comunidad.
And I am leader of that community.
También soy parte de la mesa directiva, representando a las 300 familias de Pico Gardens y las Casitas.
And I also, and also I am part of the Board of Directors of that community in Garden, Casitas.
Tengo 40 años viviendo en esa comunidad.
I've been living there for 40 years.
Y siempre me ha gustado involucrarme para beneficiar mi comunidad porque si yo beneficio mi comunidad también mi familia va a ser beneficiada.
I've always liked to be involved in my community because if I get involved in my community, my family will be benefiting from it.
Y estoy aquí para decirles que me opongo a esta moción.
And I am here to oppose this motion.
A la 170981. Porque todas las comunidades son importantes.
Because all the communities are important.
Entonces cuando vengan las elecciones, ¿quién va a votar por ustedes?
Then when elections come, who's going to vote for you?
Si no nos toman en cuenta ahorita, después nosotros no vamos a poder votar.
If you don't take in consideration, then later we will not be able to vote. Thank you, everyone.
Next speaker, please. Thank you very much.
And I also request the support from Councilman José Wizard. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Villanueva, and I'm co-chair of LA DAPA as well, which is the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. And I'm here to speak on item number two. We strongly oppose this because if you guys choose...
This is general public comment as well.
If you guys choose to go through with this motion, you're sending a direct message to these communities that their voice doesn't matter. And you guys need to show up for it, you know? We already have many communities that we speak to that are already dealing with the effects from the overproliferation of alcohol outlets. So if you guys go ahead and pass this motion and expedite that process, you're not only eliminating the voice of the community, but you're also allowing for more of this alcohol overconcentration to take place. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Malia To, and I'm a member of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance and the Coalition to Prevent Alcohol-Related harms in LA Metro. As a public health professional, working in Hollywood, and as a resident living in Koreatown, two regional centers with high alcohol densities, I oppose the creation of over-the-counter onsite alcohol conditional use permits. We, as constituents, deserve the right to provide our opinions on the standards established in selling and serving alcohol coming into our communities. Should a buy-bye? And I also want to mention who's going to enforce this. Currently, we are not doing much to enforce the conditions in these alcohol establishments. First of all, California, ABC, alcohol beverage control, they're not doing much. And second of all, we only have a little more than 10,000 law enforcement officers. That's not enough for our city of more than 4,000 individuals living here. So why should we spend more resources that we don't have and pass and fast-track all these conditions? That doesn't make sense. Our law enforcement should be doing more than just going to these establishments.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, council members. My name is Worey Castillo. I'm representing alcohol justice, and we're members of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. We oppose item number two as it reads. We would like to see public comment included in the process. And this might be a great opportunity to create a process that makes it easier for the public to challenge licenses, to provide input in the process, and also to take into account nuisance and crime around the area, and maybe review the effects of overconcentration in communities. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Marina Centron, and I'm representing the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance, a coalition made of community agencies that focus on reduction of alcohol and drug harms. The community has worked very hard in gaining support for the RS motion, number 17-0117, for over the last two years. And it has been, and it hasn't been agendized, but the express motion within two, three weeks has been up-agendized and now spoken about without reasonable public comment. Communities need more spaces for community input, not less spaces. And the RS condition or the RS motion gives an additional space for community input and for community, because each community is very different and how the neighbors and what everybody wants. If they want more restaurants, that's great. If they need a grocery store near them, that's great, too. The RS motion needs to be agendized. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you for your time. My name is Lee Pearl-Govan Jr. And just first of all, I wanted to say, Jesus love you guys, I'm sure you know. I've been on both, just to share a little bit about myself, I've been on both sides of the fence. So, um, just, and I oppose giving alcohol licenses to sell retailers without public comment. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Good morning, council members. My name's Ruben Rodriguez. I'm Executive Director of Puebli Salud. We are out in Council District 6. We also do work in Council District 7. And I'm here as part of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance, and we're here to oppose item number two. We hope that City Council understands that there is no need to fast-track any kind of license that's going to sell liquor. I know there's more jobs that need to be created, more business to be brought in, but if a business has to depend on alcohol, then maybe it shouldn't be in our neighborhoods. You know, sell good food, sell good, healthy products, do whatever you can to keep our community healthy. We do not need more drugs, and alcohol is a drug. We don't need more vices affecting our community because they are draining. It's on the backs of people that end up with problems. The cost, the human cost, is too great for the profit of a few businesses that should sell good product, not toxic products. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is General Jeff Skid Row, community activist, and I want to make you all aware of this dangerous precedent that you're in the potential of enacting. In the entire American democratic process, the voice of the people has always been a part of the conversation. If you cut out the voice of "we, the people" in terms of alcohol applications, you also have to cut it out for EIR process. You might as well do away entirely with the neighborhood council system because it's advisory. So we talk about all levels of community input have then have to be done away because of this one move right here. Not to mention, you're talking about something that's citywide. Skid Row is also within the city of Los Angeles and is commonly known as a recovery zone. There are many other, as many other areas are across the city. So now you're, you're talking about encroaching on recovery zones, so you're, you're not allowing Angelenos to recover safely because you're penetrating them with substance abuse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did Eric, I didn't check your name off. Eric Finley, did you already speak? Okay, so we'll go ahead and check your name off then. Great, thank you. So that concludes general public comment for this council meeting. And we'll close general public comment. Now we'll go ahead and return to the agenda. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item two. It has amending motion 2C and amending motion 2D, which have been distributed and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, did you still wish to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a little better understanding of this motion's intent somewhat on the fly. As I understand it, it's to deal with the fact that a restaurant that intends to have a very modest use of alcohol, and it would only be applied to restaurants, would be allowed to get a license under automatic, very serious restrictions. So we engage in restricting restaurants that serve alcohol frequently in Council District 5. But I think the goal is to provide this only to the extent that we would normally restrict them. So if we have a restaurant that we have doubts about and they ask for 2:00 AM service, we would generally cut it back to 11:00. And then when they come up for a renewal, we'd give them more normal hours. So this would, would I believe, restrict it to 11:00, as an example. So it would be for the most plain vanilla restricted uses for restaurants. And what, what I think it's getting at is the fact that, in my district at least, we see a lease sign go up on a restaurant. And six months, nine months, 12 months later, another sign goes up that says "for lease." And they never can move fast enough unless they have incredible financing to go through our very lengthy process. So I think that's what it's getting at. I still have concerns that we're cutting people out of the process. Now, what we may be doing is giving them what they would get after going through the process. So I see two sides of it. I'm not sure what happens in areas covered by specific plans, if it overrides them or not. I'm not sure if it addresses issues of alcohol, overconcentration, and more customized onsite issues, like would you serve alcohol and have a back patio where the noise can be heard by neighbors across an alley? I think there, there still are a lot of issues. And what I'd rather see is some community meetings on this issue and helping people discuss what it's all about. Because I understand it's not addressed for more liquor stores, it's only for onsite service for restaurants. But I'm still not sure that this doesn't cut people out of the process too much and not allow us to restrict as much as we'd like. So I've seen some, some amendments which would start to move in the right direction, but I'm still, I still have a lot more to hear and don't think a change of this magnitude has gotten enough public discussion yet.
All right, thank you. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me first thank all the members of the public who came down to speak about this matter. And let me tell you from the outset that I agree wholeheartedly with all of you who came to speak about oversaturation of alcohol sales and who came to speak about oversaturation, particularly of retail liquor store and grocery sales of alcohol. I agree with you completely on all of those points. And I want to assure you, that is not what is before us today. What is before us today applies only to sit-down restaurants. And the truth is, in this city, sit-down restaurants are sought by neighborhoods throughout our city. People who want to bring in good businesses into their neighborhoods, but who cannot because restaurant owners and entrepreneurs can't afford to pay the rent for a year and a half or two years while they're waiting for this city to get through its bureaucratic process to allow them to open. So time and again, we have situations where somebody puts their life savings into wanting to have a good business in a neighborhood, a business that'll attract families in and be a place that, that creates additional economic activity and jobs creation in a neighborhood, but they can't because they can't afford to pay rent for that long while we sit around and don't get our processes done. Right now in this city, 380,000 people owe their income to the restaurant and hospitality business. This is a business that creates $200 million a year in revenues for this city. And yet, we see restaurants continuing to struggle to open here. We recently passed, we worked together to pass, an increase in the minimum wage law. And thank God we did. And we all worked hard to do that. But every one of us, every single one of us around this horseshoe, heard from small businesses in our neighborhood, heard from restaurants in our business, in our, in our districts particularly, of how hard that hurt, how hard that impacted restaurants. We need to do what we can to encourage more restaurants to open so that we don't have neighborhoods that are saturated with liquor stores and grocery stores and fast-food restaurants. That's not the kind of business that we want to be investing in this city. We want people to invest in restaurants where families can sit down and enjoy a meal together. That's what this will do. That is what this is expediting. It has nothing to do with liquor stores. It has nothing to do...
Sir, please, don't, if you're going to yell out...
It has nothing to do with liquor stores.
Excuse me, sir. You're disrupting the meeting. If you continue to yell out, we're going to have to ask you to leave.
Sir, this has nothing whatever to do with liquor stores.
All right. Sir, sergeants, please go ahead and show them out. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
You may not be talking about that, sir, but what's before us today...
Sir, please, you're still disrupting this meeting.
What we're voting on today...
Have a nice day, sir.
Is sit-down restaurants. It is expressly stated in the report that's before you, and Mr. Harris-Dawson's motion and other motions that are before us today make that as crystal clear as it can be and even offer defining language so that it won't apply even to fast-food restaurants. It will only apply to sit-down restaurants. Now, here's what this will do. It will not change the pre-application process at all. A person who wants to, you know, sell alcohol in a restaurant for onsite consumption in a restaurant will still have to go through the ABC process. They will still have to go through Planning's pre-application process. They will still have their site inspected by people from Planning. They will still do all of that. But the only difference will be that instead of scheduling a zoning administrator hearing 12 months after the application, conditions will be accepted by the applicant, the strictest conditions that we already offer in this city, based on the conditions that are in the Hollywood Division, for example, that will include no dancing, no live entertainment, no karaoke, no hookah, no off-site sales, operations only until 11:00 PM and no later than 11:00 PM, operating only with a full kitchen at all operating hours, and business, the businesses have to be limited to only one operator and a single ABC license. There are three pages, 31 conditions at least, and we're adding more as we go, 31 conditions that will apply to every single applicant who comes and tries to use this expedited process. Now, if they don't want to use this expedited process, if they want to go do something else and seek different conditions, then the process remains the same. But in order to get this process, they have to accept the strictest neighborhood protecting conditions that we already apply in this city. So this will actually eliminate more bad operators, encourage more good businesses, and encourage the kind of job creation that we want to have instead of the liquor stores and grocery stores and other blighting businesses that we have now. This will allow those empty storefronts that are in business areas throughout our districts to become filled with restaurants that create jobs, create vitality in a neighborhood, create activity, instead of being filled with the kind of grocery stores and liquor stores that too often come and fill them now. So this is not only good for business, it is good for neighborhoods. This is the kind of thing that will encourage the right kind of economic investment that we want to encourage in this city. And so for those reasons, I'm happy to accept Mr. Harris-Dawson's amendment as friendly. There's also an amendment that's been circulated adding additional conditions that should be before you now, and...
There's the other one.
What is it? Thank you. So just to clarify, the additional conditions that would be included in the amendment that I've submitted to you would clarify that the process can only be used for onsite alcohol licenses in restaurants. It will ask for recommendations for a condition preventing locations that have been subject to any previous nuisance abatement, and it will also retain the same nuisance abatement revocation that we have now. It will provide notific... Oh, and by the way, some people were asking how that's going to be enforced. The City Council has recently funded an additional compliance, a condition compliance unit within Planning. So every 18 months, following issuance of any conditional use permit, whether under this process or otherwise, the city will now be inspecting to ensure that conditions are being complied with. That is a new development, which is an improvement over the old practice. The amendment would provide notification of any application to the council office, to the neighborhood council, and to the LAPD. We would ask for recommendations on the feasibility of including an appeal process, the feasibility of establishing a time limitation on the CUP and a renewable, a renewal process under the condition compliance unit. We'd ask for recommendations on including a condition preventing any outdoor advertisement of alcohol and recommendations on including a condition prohibiting any drive-through establishments, restaurants, from participating in this process at all. So all of that, we would ask to be a part of this as well. In addition, this is not an ordinance. So Mr. Kretz mentioned earlier, the need to have additional public input into this, there will be. This is simply moving the process forward to the Planning Commission, which will take additional public comment, and if there are additional refinements that will help to protect neighborhoods better, so be it. But this, I'd be happy to entertain that. This gets the process going to help encourage good investment in the city, to help encourage businesses that want to do the right things by neighborhoods, to not be stymied by a useless bureaucratic process that will produce less protection for neighborhoods than the conditions that we're including in the assumed conditions under this process. So with that, Mr. President, I would ask for your high vote.
Okay, thank you. We do have a number of other speakers as well. Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank everybody who came out today, both in the previous hearing and in this hearing, to speak on this matter. I think it's a very, very weighty issue and affects the quality of life in neighborhoods across the city and also affects the business environment. I also really appreciate and want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Kukorian, for bringing this forward because I think the spirit of this motion is exactly correct. We have a system that is broken on both sides, and this motion attempts to fix it on one I want to acknowledge everything that everybody said and also acknowledge what I think is the elephant in the room, and that is that the City of Los Angeles, of which I'm a member of its council, has a big, giant credibility problem. So we say, on the one hand, on the one side, we say we want to be business-friendly and we want to help businesses operate and we want to create an environment that's healthy for businesses, except we put out a process that's 18 months, 24 months long. And then we also say we want to be friendly to community and we want to make sure we have a good quality of life, except the enforcement process, a lot of times, is either nonexistent or far too long. And so on both sides, we get all kinds of pressure to change those systems. And so I've put forward a motion, which I appreciate being accepted as friendly, which deals with the issue of over-concentration. If there are host of other liquor outlet, both onsite or off-site locations near an establishment, that'll be taken into account and it'll be pulled out of this process. If there is a safety issue, like we have in Skid Row and some places in South LA, that one will be taken out of this process. Also, if we have a fast-food restaurant, but I want to acknowledge and be super clear about this, we've tried to define what a fast-food restaurant is. But I'll speak for my part of town. Years and years ago, by our research, we think it was sometime in the 1940s, the City of LA said, "Well, we need more butchers and more meat markets." And so, "We're gonna make it so if you're a meat market, you can get a fast-track liquor license," right? So now, on corridors in my district, I have businesses that, on the outside, say "meat marker" in small print and "liquor" in big giant print, right? And when you go in the store, there's a lot of liquor and there's no meat. And when you call somebody in the City of LA to say, "Hey, you gave this guy a liquor license because he was supposed to provide meat to the community and he's not providing meat, why don't you do something about that?" You don't get anybody. And if you do get anybody, great. At some of these organizations, the Community Coalition included, we had people on staff who their only job was to hold the city accountable for some of these kinds of markets. And it would take eight years for the city not to withdraw the license from this person, but to force them to have meat. And so they'd have meat for a couple of months, right? And then the people in the neighborhood would go back and say, "Well, the meat's gone, the liquor's still there." And we have to go through the process again and again and again. And so I want to acknowledge that we have a broken system and I understand that people don't trust the city, and you should continue to pressure us. You know, I'll use another example. The voters went to the polls, not the city council, the actual voters, went to the polls in November and set distancing requirements for marijuana shops, right? I don't know that the city attorney has imposed one fine. I have marijuana shops now directly across the street from schools, right down the block from parks. And so, it makes perfect sense to me. It makes perfect sense to me that no one, or not a lot of people, trusts our process. And so, I ask you to continue to hold us accountable. I intend to support this motion, to have a community discussion about this. It'll go to the City Planning Commission, as Mr. Kukorian has pointed out. It'll come back to Plum Committee, which at the moment I sit on, and so will be a part of that discussion, and it'll come back to council. And so, I think we'll have a thorough discussion, but I think all of us, especially our community activists, you've got to hold our feet to the fire on both sides of this deal. If we say we want to fast-track things and make things better for businesses and create a situation where in South LA, on a Monday afternoon about 2:00, you go try to have a sit-down meal for lunch. Where are you gonna go? It's very, very difficult. The one restaurant we have that you and I had lunch in, it took us about 20 months to get them a beer and wine license, and that was the kind of restaurant we want to have. We could've lost that restaurant in that time. And so, if we want to create that kind of environment where we have the kind of businesses we deserve, one, and two, we can hold bad businesses accountable, I think is where we want to get. I think this gets us part of the way. We want to continue to push so we get all the way and we get the kind of communities we all deserve to live in.
Mr. Huitzard.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item has gone through Plum. I wasn't at the Plum meeting when it was forwarded to full council, but certainly the type of discussion that we're having here shows that we need further discussion on this. It still will go to CPC and eventually come back to Plum and to full council again to have those types of discussions. There are several report backs that have been requested. We certainly need to look at those to see if they make sense or not. One of my concerns is exactly what Mr. Harris-Dawson requested, and that is, when we, right now, with everything happening downtown, for example, the explosion of entertainment venues, we often see applications for onsite sit-down restaurants, and in fact, it's a menu of four or five items, and they're really only fronting for a bar. And so my concern is that we will see more of these in areas of over-concentration. So we need to discuss what types of things we could put in place to protect areas that are over-concentrated with beer and wine and alcohol venues and are not fronting as restaurants, but in fact, are bars and we're adding to a bad situation. So those are the types of issues we need to discuss, and as it moves through the process, we'll get those report backs from our Planning Department, we'll get some input from CPC. And also, we need to see what type of appeal process is possible so that we do have public input. Because oftentimes, we could vote on items here, but unless we hear from the community about what is the real situation on the community, we don't see it. And those appeal processes will help us get through that process. So while the intent is great and we need to support business, we need to support our restaurants, we also need to make sure that communities who have been inadvertently impacted and affected by our decisions, that we protect them here as well and that we do not further contribute to a bad situation where we do have neighborhoods with an over-concentration of beer and wine and liquor licenses. So while I don't think it's ready to be, while it's ready, we ask, we'll get further input as it goes through CPC, back to council, and continue to discuss this important matter. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think all of the salient points have been made from the public with your very well-understood and respected and legitimate concerns with oversaturation, with Mr. Kukorian's clarification on exactly what it is we're deciding on in terms of sit-down restaurants and excluding the others, and with Mr. Harris-Dawson's perspective on the history in his particular district and in South Los Angeles. I've been living with oversaturation since I've been councilmember in Hollywood, that's a real issue, which brings me to the next thing that I want to talk about, and that is the importance of the conditions that are adopted when these approvals go through. It's the conditions that have enabled me to shut down three of the bad operators in Hollywood that were bringing an inordinate amount of nuisance activity and crime to the area because these three bad operators were way out of compliance with the conditions that were imposed on them when they opened. Now, the conditions are so important because what you can do then is bring them in for an administrative hearing and their licenses can be revoked. There are a few more on my short list of what I call bad operators in Hollywood, and we're relying on the conditions and the violations of those conditions to close them down, basically. So that's important. And the fact that there are additional conditions imposed for this particular privilege is a really great thing, and I look forward to seeing that further defined and adopted as part of this policy. The other thing I wanted to mention is jobs. Every community that has restaurants, whether they serve beer and wine or alcohol or not, they employ local residents and in high numbers. It is estimated, and I learned this during the whole minimum wage conversation, that one in 10 jobs in the City of Los Angeles are at a restaurant, one in 10. We know that 3/4 of employers work at small businesses. Our restaurants are small businesses. We also know that a good sit-down restaurant that Mr. Harris-Dawson mentioned, who he was able to help and land in his district where he had lunch with Mr. Kukorian, it is, it adds to the vibrancy of a neighborhood and it adds to the safety of a neighborhood as well, a gathering spot. And then, lastly, in terms of jobs, revenue, tax revenue. It's that revenue that we collect in our neighborhoods, in the city limits, that enable us to make sure that the neighborhoods get the services that they deserve, whether it's street cleaning or additional police officers or parking enforcement or tree trimming. We need to put the city in the business of supporting businesses, and we do that with discussions just like this so that we strike the right balance that helps our communities prosper. And I have no doubt, after hearing this discussion, that's where we're headed with this. So I look forward to the continued engagement as well, but I also look forward to helping break that, through that red tape, cut through that red tape for our entrepreneurs that oftentimes are our neighbors, that want to open a business in the neighborhood in which they live and where they can hire locally. So I want to congratulate all parties for being at the table for this very important discussion. So let's move this forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kretz, I'm not sure if you hit the button again to speak or I just didn't remove your name.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. There's an additional issue which a couple people referenced, one of my motions that deals with, that could also come into play here, which is, the city attorney has determined, and I'm describing it as best as I can, that voluntary conditions are not valid. So, there have been cases where we've approved a restaurant and alcohol based on voluntary conditions, and not only have they been violated, but they've been violated with the full support of our city staff, saying they don't really apply, so go ahead and violate them and not notifying the council office or the public. So, this is obviously a big problem. I think most of the council may not have even figured this is happening yet, but it's probably happened in some of your districts without your knowledge. And so my concern is that some of these conditions may be the same ones that we've tried to systematize in this process, and we could create a process where the city attorney could come back later and say, "Well, you know, a couple of these conditions really aren't applicable." So I want to be sure that when we create a streamlined process, we're not basing it on any conditions that we later determine can't really be included and we might have to invalidate. That would create a streamlining process where someone could agree to a very benign restaurant and then say, "Oh, I don't want to do this and this," and we could determine later that that change was valid and they could ignore a couple of our conditions. My other question is, Mr. Kukorian gave a pretty good list of some positive things that this would bring about, but one of them, which is notification to council offices and neighborhood councils, I don't understand if there's a value to that because it seems like we're shut out of the process. So it doesn't come back for public input, it doesn't come back for council input. So it seems like we're just being notified to be frustrated about something we no longer have any kind of a say in. So if there's a purpose to that, I'd want to know what it is.
Mr. Kukorian, to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things, Mr. Kretz. First of all, on the voluntary conditions issue, I hope that we'll be hearing a remedy to that with regard to your motion soon. I think that's important. What's before us today actually addresses that in part because the conditions that would be encompassed by this process include conditions that typically, currently, are voluntary conditions. So under this process, those voluntary conditions will now be mandatory because although it's an expedited process without a hearing, they will be imposed as a condition on the property. So I think, at least in part, that issue is addressed by this. With regard to the notification, one of the things that I think Mr. Harris-Dawson's amendment called for is to examine, and also my amendment as well, to examine whether there can be an appeal process, with the feasibility of that, how that would work. Notification allows communities to monitor what businesses are applying, what conditions have been granted, and then whether an appeal process, if there is going to be an appeal process, whether an appeal is appropriate. It also allows council offices, neighborhood councils in the neighborhoods to monitor compliance after issuance as well because nuisance abatement and condition compliance still remains every bit in effect under this process as previously, and I'd be entirely supportive of making it even more assertive. But, so none of that changes. None of the issue of condition compliance changes. Nothing with regard to nuisance abatement changes in the slightest. So notification allows us to continue, allows neighborhoods and council offices to continue to utilize those existing tools to be able to ensure that only good operators are benefiting from this process.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, there are no other speakers on the queue, so we'll go ahead and open the roll, including all of the amendments. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, and that'll be sent forthwith along with item 21. We have a request for forthwith as well, so without objection--
Excuse me, Mr. President. For clarification, the vote is?
14 ayes and 1 no.
Oh, 1, 14 to 1. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And I just want to ask the city clerk for point of clarification. The item number 2 is going to the Citywide Planning Commission for review, correct?
Correct.
And then after that, it comes back to Plum and to full city council again, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We have motions for posting referral, those will be posted referral. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none. Do we have any adjourning motions? I'm looking to my left, I don't see any. Looking to my right, I don't see any adjourning motions. Okay, if we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. If we can get everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. Councilmember Rue.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in the honor of Fay Spanos. Fay was born in Florida in 1926. Her childhood was not an easy one. Her mother died at a young age and she grew up taking care of her father and younger brother. When she was 18, she met the love of her life, Alex Spanos, a young man in the Air Force who was stationed in Florida. In one glance, she knew he was the one. In one glance, she knew he was the one. After four years of long-distance courtship, they got married and moved to Stockton, California, where they decided to settle and raise a family for the next 70 years. Married life found them working side by side in the kitchen of Alex's father's bakery, and the young couple began to build their family as they welcomed their children, Dean, Dia, Alexis, and Michael. As the couple's success in business grew, they became the owners of the now Los Angeles Chargers. Through their prosperity, they have been able to give back to their community through donations benefiting schools, the arts, hospitals, and people in need. Fay passed away on August 8th at the age of 92. She is survived by her husband Alex, four children, 15 grandchildren, and 10 great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace.
Thank you for that, Mr. Rue. Seeing no other adjourning motions, that concludes this council meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you.
I am not just an environmentalist at work, but I am an environmentalist at heart. 70% of the world's surface is covered by water. In order to see the world, you really have to be in the water. I was a scuba dive instructor and realized that I had a passion for the ocean and needed to work as a marine biologist. So when the position in water quality came up, I knew that was my job. As an environmental specialist at the Port of Los Angeles, I wear many hats. I primarily oversee stormwater quality. I am the sustainability coordinator for the Port of Los Angeles, and I oversee the management of a 15-acre endangered California leotard nesting site. We, at the Harbor Department, ensure that the birds are as successful as they can be. My job is to go around and visit all of our tenants, from the large industrial operators to the restaurants, the municipal fish markets, and everything in between, to ensure that we have the highest quality of water entering the harbor waters. The Environmental Management Division was founded in the '70s. We were the first environmental management division in the City of Los Angeles. We now support 20 full-time staff members and an additional 30 contracted employees. We've been entrusted through the Tidlins Trust to be an economic engine as well as stewards of the environment. So although this is an industrial port complex, it's teeming with wildlife. In my household, we try to keep our carbon footprint down and be as environmentally friendly as possible. I do have a busy home life. It consists of my mom and my husband and our five daughters, who range from 23-years-old to 2-years-old. So a lot of hair braiding happens in my house. I derive the most inspiration from meeting people and helping them understand how their actions can impact water quality. We know that trash is a really big problem impacting our oceans today, and changes that you make in how you operate can really make a difference. And I see a future where we have a thriving habitat and thriving industry side by side.
All the water that comes down and lands on our roof, it's stored into a bucket. I get one day's worth of rain and I can pour it out into the garden. There's so much wasted water, and the fixes are so easy.
For people that have been working in the stormwater field, this is kind of a magical moment, because we've been waiting for the time to shift the focus from the end of the pipe and how to control pollutants to making neighborhoods and cities and urban areas actually build and look and behave differently. So there's a real shift in the way we're thinking, and this is exciting. And so what we're trying to do is get as many of those uses in that are beneficial along the way between where that rain falls hitting a roof and where it might make it out to the river.
When we talk about global climate change, we can look at things-